We need to get underway, thank you. Good morning everybody and welcome to Thursday. Everybody's been working very hard and learning a lot and sharing information and experiences. And in that spirit, I'd just like to give a little advertisement. On the third floor, above where the secretariat offices are, level above that, if you look above where the whale shark is, there's an exhibition which is tucked away a bit and some people may not have seen it. It's the Beyond the Eyes International Nature Photography Awards from China. Some fantastic photographs, well worth a look if you haven't found it. I haven't been asked to make that announcement, I just enjoyed the photos myself this morning and I know Bradley has enjoyed them too, so take a look at those. This morning, I want to announce our proposed schedule which is pretty much as in your programme. As for the other mornings, I'm going to start with brief reports from the committees and working groups. And then move on to one item that was held over from yesterday, which we, I think, are ready to discuss and agree to. That's item 24.1.10, Action Plan for America's Flyways. And then we're going to get into the listing proposals. The amendment proposals, I'm aware that there is still some discussion going on, particularly in relation to the mammal proposals. So what I propose to do is change the order slightly. I'll start with birds, then move on to fish, and then mammals. Now, either during the break between probably fish and mammals or at the end of the amendment proposals, we will discuss those CRPs that have been up on the website and have been there in three languages so that you have had a proper chance to assess them. And we'd like to get through as many of those as possible, but we know that the secretariat and the translators are working very hard to produce those in time so that you can see them. So please check back on the website, the meeting website. Perhaps I'll ask the secretariat just to give you the address, just to clarify that so that you're up to speed with the CRP.
Thank you, though on the main meeting website, you'll all be familiar with the meeting documents and the proposals. There's now a new... Can't hear? No translation? Are people hearing it in French? Spanish can't hear apparently? French is okay? Could it be the microphone, my microphone, or is it something else? Could we ask the technicians to communicate with the interpreters please? Okay, seems we have a technical problem.
Interpreters, just so to clarify what the issue might be. Interpreters, can you hear me? Thank you very much. So I understand that it may be a problem with the receiver that you have at your desk. If you're having a difficulty, perhaps try another one. The interpreters can hear us okay and the relays are working. So I think we'll proceed.
Okay, as I was saying, on the main meeting website that you're all familiar with, you'll now find a new button for in-session documents. And there you will find conference room papers, CRPs being posted. There are a number there already in English, there are two already in three languages, and more will be posted during the course of this morning. Just a quick note on the numbering, they're numbered CRP 1, CRP 2, CRP 3. And then there's a second numbering system which is CRP 100, 101, 102. And those are for documents, the 100 series is for documents arising out of the Review of Decisions process in the Review of Decisions working group, just to keep them separate from the other agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretariat. So that's discussion of CRPs. After we have completed the amendment proposals, then we are going on down the agenda, recognizing that we have dealt with some of those items already yesterday. So we will go to number... Sorry, I just can't read my own writing here. 25.2, Revision of the Template and Guidelines for Listing Proposals, followed by 16.1, Synergies and Common Services Amongst CMS Instruments. Item 23 has been dealt with already. Then we go on to 4.2, Rules of Procedure. Item 27 is in progress, we've already discussed that. That's the manhood declaration and there'll be a CRP paper on that, I assume. And then implementation of the concerted action process. So we've got a pretty tight agenda, but given the pace that we've been going at and the hard work that working groups and bilaterals have been demonstrating, I think we'll do okay. So with no further ado, can I please ask the committee chairs? So is the credentials committee chair available to report progress, please?
Gracias señor presidente. El comité de credenciales llevó a cabo su tercera reunión el día jueves 26, a la cual asistieron...
On the 26th, we had Congo, Ghana, Saudi Arabia and Uruguay, which was elected as chair of said committee and assisted by the secretariat. The credentials of the following four parties which will be listed were examined and found in order: Afghanistan, India, Kazakhstan and Peru. Thank you Chair.
It's fine, thank you very much Chair, that was very clear. So our next call on the chair of the Budget Committee, please.
Thank you very much Chair and good morning to us all. Yes, we had another meeting yesterday and I would say the working group is in good spirits, at least for the time being. And we're, to put it straight, we're looking at scenario 2 and we're now discussing add-ons to scenario 2. There are a number of options for add-on and changes also to the resolution has been discussed yesterday. But today we will be mainly focusing on finding what will potentially be the add-ons. So we'll be finished, I hope, by tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much Chair, excellent progress in the Budget Committee. Can I hear from the working groups, Review of Decisions, anything to say, please?
Thank you Chair. I'm pleased to report that the Review of Decision Working Group finished its work yesterday. And only one CRP that is not yet posted. We are yet to just finalize on a paragraph which I think by midday we shall have finalized. Perhaps because today might be the last time we are reporting, I want to thank the members of this group. They did a good job and so we say thank you to all of them and thanks to the secretariat for the support provided to the group. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, your management of this group is clearly an inspiration to us all. I appreciate the work you've done. Next I'd hear from the Institutional Working Group, please.
Thank you Chair and yes, he is an inspiration to our working group because we would like to finish up by this morning or hopefully by lunchtime. So we met yesterday and we have sorted out the majority of the details associated with the review mechanism. Only one square bracket remains and we're going to consider that item again today. But this morning, as soon as we conclude here with the working group reports, we'll be reconvening and we'll be discussing the national legislation programme straight away in room 10. And I'm really hopeful and remain optimistic that we can wrap that up by lunchtime. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much and again, thanks for all the hard work given the number of tasks that we have given you. I'd like to now call on the Chair of the Terrestrial Working Group, please.
Thank you Chair. We were able to conclude discussion on 16 of the 19 agenda items. Of these 16, unfortunately, in four of them, we were not able to get consensus. And for 12, yes, we did have consensus. Now, those that do not have the consensus are actually agenda items that deal with giraffe, lion, chimpanzee and the leopard. We have today three other agenda items which we would like to consider. We've done some already but we need to put finishing touches to them. And these are the taxonomy and nomenclature, discussions on the cheetah and put a final touch to wild meat sustainable use. Let's say, agenda 24.4.7. So I'm hoping that lunchtime we'll be able to give you good news, Mr Chair.
Thank you, I look forward to good news. Maybe I could just seek clarification regarding the four items on which you don't have consensus. Are you planning to do further work on those four? Or do you have a suggestion to us as to the way forward, please?
Well, Chair, I am not sure, but maybe from this comment that I'm making on the floor, the parties that are not actually within the consensus may consider coming into consensus. But as it is now, it looks like we have dug deep. We've spent so much time trying to convince ourselves that it is useful to have an agreement here. And I don't know how long we can continue to convince one another. So we'll try, you know, last time, maybe lunchtime, to ask if there has been a change in thought. If there's no change in thought, Mr Chair, maybe I'll have to come back with you, to you with not so good news. And then we'll take it up from there at plenary. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, that's helpful clarification, so keep trying and I know you'll bring all of your skills to bear. Next working group is Avian, please.
Thank you Chair, the Avian group made very good progress yesterday, including an exceptionally well-attended session on taxonomy last night. And we're very close to finalizing documents. We'll be meeting at lunchtime just to review a few remaining details. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much and it's wonderful to imagine a room full of enthusiastic taxonomists. Can I please hear from the Aquatic Working Group Chair?
Thank you. I'm pleased to say that the Aquatic Working Group has concluded its work and all but the Bycatch Resolution are currently in the CRP production phase and quite a few of the documents are currently online. The Bycatch 1 requires a minor clarification with one party and I stress it is just a minor matter. But essentially, yes, we're done and I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all members of the working group who were very cooperative and helpful in trying to get through what I thought was a fairly large work programme. And I'd particularly like to thank Heidi Frisch from the secretariat who, as always, provides fantastic support for the Aquatic Working Group at Conference of Parties. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I know everyone's worked particularly hard and especially you Chair, so thank you Barry for all of your efforts and skill. Those are the formal working groups, but there were some other ad hoc working groups established and I wonder whether we could hear any reports that the coordinators of those groups wish to give us. Colin, do you have anything to say about your work, please?
Thank you Chairman and good morning. Yeah, briefly to report from the strategic plan and the national reporting working group. We met yesterday evening and have made very good progress indeed. We will meet again this morning at 11 o'clock onwards in room 309 for those who would like to join us, but I'm optimistic we should be able to report back in the early afternoon, I think we're making good progress on that. If I can, while I have the floor, also mention the Climate Change Working Group which will meet immediately when we conclude this report this morning. So from now until 11 o'clock again in room 309. Thank you.
Thank you very much Colin Galbraith and that's good news. Just while in the break, can I ask again that any CRP documents still to be produced, either by the working groups or there's some informal contact groups on some issues, please submit them as soon as you can. I know we have a deadline we've given you at the end of tonight, midnight tonight, but I think if we can get them into the system before then, then it helps us to plan our deliberations on these documents a lot easier. And I appreciate the fact that a lot of CRPs have already been submitted. That's excellent, so we're in a position to be able to discuss some of those today. All right, are there any other leaders of contact groups or working groups who I might have neglected who wish to make a statement at this point about progress? No, I don't see any requests for the floor. Okay, thanks. Well, we'll get into the, I was going to say the meat of the meeting, but I won't do that. We'll get into the interesting business of amendment proposals. And as I said, I'd like to start with birds, followed by fish and then mammals. I beg your pardon, thank you. I have been reminded by the rapporteur that we have an item from yesterday which is the item on the Action Plan for America's Flyways. That's 24.1.10 and the secretariat is going to introduce that. Boja, please.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Buenos dias a todos.
The document we are going to be presenting is 24.1.10 on the flyways. The flyways. And this document, as you can see, has a draft resolution on flyways, which is on a global level. And we can include any subject relating to flyways anywhere in the world. And then it also has an action plan which is more detailed on America's flyways. So the America's flyways. I would like to mention and I'd like to thank the delegations of Argentina and the United Kingdom for their collaboration in correcting an error which had occurred in Annex 2 of the America's document and which will be corrected in the next CRP version of this document and which will be published in the coming hours. I would also like to say that in relation to the America's flyways, we have set up a working group which is made up of a number of members from all countries that arrange states. And we intend to hold a meeting of this working group next year. And so we'd like to thank Brazil for their generous offer. They have invited us to hold the meeting in 2018 in Brazil. So in that way, we'll be able to continue progressing with that work group and work on the implementation of the action plan and all of the aspects relating to America's flyways. So, Chair, I finish my presentation there, thank you.
Thank you, Secretariat. So the question is whether we agree to endorsing this draft resolution? Do I have any requests for the floor? I have Ecuador and India. Ecuador first, please.
Gracias señor presidente por permitirme una vez más intervenir. Quiero hacer un reconocimiento que las mutas migratorias tienen que considerar como redes económicas para la protección de sus aves. Must be seen as ecological networks for the conservation of the habitat and species. They should take into account the wide-ranging participation that was involved in producing this document with a scientific working group and some organizations. So Ecuador would like to request the support of parties for this document. And it would also like to mention that we will first of all hear the various opinions and then we can integrate the group of work where we will go through all the views that have been presented and we can agree on the final resolution. Y nuevamente agradezco a todo el grupo que trabajó ampliamente durante la COP 11 y esperamos tener en el futuro experience of work and we hope that we will be able to come up with a good diagnosis of the Americas region and we'll be able to work together as a CMS group. Thank you.
Thank you very much Ecuador. I now call on India.
Thank you, thank you Chairperson. We thank the AWA, the secretariat, and Brazil for hosting the meeting that they have just suggested. We from India would like to add a paragraph under the doc 24.1.10 as a new point number eight wherein we would like to suggest with our intention of the text is to be to have showing the willingness of our country, India, to support the development of a midterm plan for revitalizing the CEF, the Central Asian Flyways, and suggest a holistic plan with resources from the support from government of India. Thank you sir.
Thank you, thank you India. I'm a bit unclear, given this is an action plan for America's flyways, this is perhaps not the most appropriate place to insert that paragraph. Can I ask the secretariat to comment, please?
Yes, I would say it in English, just to clarify that the draft resolution is global. Then there is an annex which is an action plan for the Americas, but in the resolution, everything can be accommodated.
Thank you for that clarification. So the question is whether anyone objects to the suggestion of India? If not, then can India please provide... Sri Lanka, please.
Thank you Chair. Sri Lanka would like to express our support to the inclusion of the text made by the government of India with regard to the Central Asian flyway. This initiative and support pledged by India is essential to expand the conservation of waterbirds migrating into South Asia. Where for many species, Sri Lanka is their southernmost destination. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much for that supportive comment as well. Any other... Yeah, I'll hear from Brazil, but I presume it's not on this matter. I'm just clarifying, there's no objection to the addition of the paragraph from India, so please provide that. Brazil, please.
Thank you Chair. Our delegation would like to recognize the leadership of Ecuador to the development of the America's Flyway Action Plan. This proposal is perfectly aligned with the This proposal is perfectly aligned with the Brazilian National Action Plan for shorebirds. So Brazil supports this action plan and expects its approval, and, more important, its implementation. Brazil also maintains the proposal to host next year, with the assistance of the secretariat, the first meeting of the task force on migratory birds and flyways of Americas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Brazil, and thank you for that offer. Any more requests from the floor? I see none, so I think as amended, we can. No, we have Norway. Thank you, Norway.
Thank you very much. We certainly also welcome this work on the Americas flyway and also on the global initiative. Just a question, actually. It's possibly only me not realizing this, but I was thinking of the action plan for the Americas flyway. Will that be adopted by the Standing Committee? Or will it be at the next COP? Or what's the view? Is this something we will bring on in our agenda as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask the secretariat to please respond?
Thank you, Norway, for your intervention. Yes, it is intended that this document would go now to the Avian Working Group, and their precise formulation will be defined in that respect.
So please accept the delay. I'll have to sort out a few things here. The question is really whether this needs to go to the working group or whether we can adopt it here. So I will ask Ecuador for an opinion as to whether we should do more work in the working group or whether the amendments proposed and the suggestion by Norway can be accepted here. Ecuador and then Argentina.
Gracias, señor Presidente. Vamos a trabajar en el grupo de aves.
We are going to work in the Avian Group to look at all of these amendments, and then we will come back with the finished document. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ecuador. And I'm assuming that's okay with the working group chair. Argentina, do you want to add to this?
Muchas gracias, señor Presidente.
Thank you very much. Just a comment from our country on the minor amendment that we had to make to the document. We wanted to comment at what we've agreed with the United Kingdom in how we reflect the names of the Babines and Georges, of the Malvinas and the South Georgia islands. It's not completely clear. In particular, on the French document, it's just a matter of editing that will be solved quickly. And we'd like to thank the delegation of the United Kingdom for having carried out the work to be able to find a suitable and timely agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Argentina, and thank you, UK, for working to clarify that wording. So my decision is that this will go to the working group for finalization. But do you wish to say something?
Sorry, if I may, just coming on behalf of the UK to say that I agree with Argentina. We've both worked very hard to reach agreed text. It's unfortunate that the version on the website now doesn't reflect that, and we trust that it's just an editorial change that needs to be made.
Yes, thank you, and I am assured that that will be corrected on the website. Thank you very much. So the working group has a small task there and look forward to the result. Thank you. So now we can move on to species amendments of the appendices. And as I said, I would like to start with birds. And the first, just get my notes in order here. So the first proposal under AVES is twenty five point one point eleven regarding Andrew's eye, the Christmas frigate bird for inclusion in Appendix One. And Philippines are going to introduce Philippines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Proposal for the inclusion of the Christmas frigate bird on Appendix One of the convention. The species is critically endangered with a population of around five thousand adult individuals, though in declining numbers. It breeds exclusively on Christmas Island, Australia, but occurs non-breeding widely in waters of South Asian countries, including the Philippines to Indochina and to northern Australia. The species is threatened by a range of factors, including shooting, live catching, poisoning, entanglements in fishing gear, and outside of protected areas, clearance of forests and vital roosting sites. It would benefit from enhanced protection, especially in roosting sites, on small islets and in main feeding areas, where anthropogenic activities have negative impacts on the population. The aim of the proposed listing is for countries within the species' main range to conclude agreements, develop strategies and action plans, which will address the main threats. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Before we go on, before I call for comments on this, as a matter of general process, I'm not very keen to have a lot of interventions saying the same thing. And also, and I know that the proponents are aware of this, and just as the Philippines have done, I would appreciate it if you could make your introduction short, three minutes would be a good guide. But if there is broad agreement on a proposal, then we'll try to accept it and move on. Of course, if there are diverging views, then we need to hear those. So long statements in support of a proposal, we don't need too many of those if there's general agreement, but I don't want to stifle debate. So with that, are there any comments on the Philippines proposal? We have Australia, and I believe Australia's a range state, so I'm looking forward to hearing from Australia.
Thank you, Chair, and I'll keep this brief for that reason. I'd like to thank the governor of the Philippines for bringing forward this listing proposal. Australia, as was noted in the listing proposal, this species breeds only on Christmas Island, which is an Australian territory, but forages widely in Southeast Asia and the Indian Ocean. Threats to the population include habitat loss disturbance and modification, and mortality associated with fishing activities. Given the restricted nature of the species, coupled with the threats it faces, Australia fully supports an Appendix One listing of the Christmas Island frigate bird. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Australia. EU, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to say that we will not make an intervention, as you have proposed, on every proposed species, but I want to, we will do for some species or for some group of species. But I want to announce that the EU really thanks all of the countries, including the host country, for the hard work they have put into making the proposals. And we support all of the proposals that have been made for listings, as we think that they meet the CMS criteria for listing, and they are really well substantiated. So just to make that point, we will not intervene on all proposals made, but we support them all. Thank you.
Thank you, EU, and I appreciate that advice regarding the proposals. Of course, it does not prevent you from adding value to the debate on those that you wish to intervene on, so thank you. Any other parties looking for the floor, any other interventions on this one? I see no flags, so Philippines, I think we can agree that the meeting endorses the proposal, and it will be that recommendation where we transmit it to the plenary accordingly. Thank you, Philippines. So the next proposal is the black nadi. It's twenty five one twelve. Anus minutus wusteri, and that's for inclusion in Appendix One, and that's also the Philippines. Philippines, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This proposal is for the inclusion of black nadi, Anus minutus subspecies worcesteri in Appendix Two. The species is classified as endangered by the Philippine Red List Committee, which did the assessment and evaluation of birds in the Philippines and prepared the draft DNR administrative order updating the Philippine Red List of faunal species on account of a very small population which breeds within a tiny area of occupancy on just two islets. It has an adult population of up to ten thousand six hundred fifty-six individuals, and is projected to decline by more than seventy percent over the next ten to fifteen years because of the change in ecological character of their breeding habitat and other existing and potential threats. Anus minutus subspecies worcesteri breeds only on two islets, totaling one point six hectares in the Tubataha Ribs Natural Park, the Philippines, where a small population has been in continuous decline since 2013 due to massive loss in breeding habitat and decrease in land area by more than eighteen percent due to erosion. Encroachment of their nest trees by red-footed booby that prolifically breed in the same islets. This is exacerbated by the occurrence of the El Nino phenomenon that contributed to the death of nest trees. The black nadi subspecies worcesteri leaves its breeding ground at the central Sulu Sea of the Tubataha Ribs Natural Park in November and returns mainly in March. In March, it has been sighted in Indonesian waters such as Java Sea outside of the breeding season. A juvenile bird bonded on Bird Island, Tubataha Reef Natural Park, was documented from Langkayan Island, Sabah, Malaysia, three years after it was bonded. There is only one recent record of the subspecies from within the Philippines outside of the Sulu Sea, suggesting that the bird migrates to nearby Indonesian and Malaysian waters and occasionally west to Sri Lanka. The aim of this proposal is to establish strategies and strongly justify the development of action plans to protect the species. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Philippines. Do I have any comments on this proposal? I see no requests for the floor, so can I assume that the committee supports this proposal and will transmit it to the plenary accordingly? I conclude that the committee supports the proposal. Thank you very much, Philippines. Next, we have two proposals on the same species. Proposal for the inclusion of the steppe eagle, Aquila nippalensis, on Appendix One of the convention. There is a proposal from the government of Mongolia and also a proposal from Saudi Arabia. In the case of proposals where there are two parties submitting similar proposals, I will request the discussion jointly, but will invite the first proponent on my list, Mongolia, and then also invite Saudi Arabia to comment. If that's acceptable, Saudi Arabia. So Mongolia, would you please introduce your proposal?
Thank you very much, Chair. And yes, Mongolia and Saudi Arabia both presented the same, almost same proposal for one species to be included in Appendix One of CMS. So steppe eagle is a highly migratory species, moving seasonally thousand and thousand kilometers within the region. The threats are, you know, especially for last decades, rapidly growing due to different natural and human-related factors. And then some scientists say that the global population is nearly about thirty-seven thousand, while Mongolia is about only fifteen, around fifteen thousand birds. So because proposal was put in the internet for many times ago, I would not like to go deeply. And I'm asking distinguished delegates to support this proposal to be included in Appendix One. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mongolia. And now I call on Saudi Arabia to comment on the proposal, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. We very much wish that attendees and conference of the parties endorse this proposal. The steppe eagle is a migratory species which comes through my country. Saudi Arabia is a crossroad for migration between Asia and Africa, and it's very important that the species take the due attention from all parties and the range states and the flyway. So we very much wish that an acceptance get granted to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Saudi Arabia. Do I have any other parties who wish to take the floor on this proposal? I see none. I see no other requests for the floor. So with that, I conclude that this committee endorses the proposal to list the species on Appendix One, and will transmit that to the plenary. Thank you very much, Saudi Arabia and Mongolia. So the next proposal is for the inclusion of four vulture species occurring in Asia on Appendix One of the convention. Gips bingalensis, gips indicus, gips tinuar ostrus, and saco gips calvis. And I invite Pakistan to introduce the proposal, please, Pakistan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pakistan submits a proposal for listing the entire populations of four vulture species occurring in Asia, namely the red-headed vulture, Indian vulture, and slender-billed vulture on Appendix One of CMS. Pakistan, along with the range states of the Asian vulture species, recognized in the early nineties that these were among the most abundant large raptors in the world. However, within a decade, the population of these three species and the red-headed vulture had declined so precipitously that all four were considered critically endangered in 2007. The major reason was a result of feeding on carcasses of animals treated with veterinary drug diclofenic, perhaps in combination with other causes. Listing the whole population of these four critically endangered Asian vulture species is considered to be an important step towards reversing population declines. It should also facilitate implementation of the Multispecies Action Plan to conserve African Eurasian vultures developed under the framework of CMS. This proposal was reviewed by the CMS Scientific Council at the second meeting and its session of meeting July 2017. Pakistan readily accepts the refinements to section six point four and eight recommended by the council. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Pakistan. Do I have any comment on the proposal? We have the EU. We have the EU and that's it so far, so EU please.
Thank you Mister Chairman, and this is a statement for the proposals under item twenty five point one fourteen fifteen and sixteen. So all the vultures um on behalf of the EU and its member states. The vultures are amongst the most threatened raptors in the world. Until the nineteen nineties, several Asian and African. Vulture species were the most abundant raptors in the world. Within the decade, however, most populations of vultures had declined so precipitously. That most of them are considered critically endangered or endangered today. This is due largely to feeding on carcasses of animals treated with veterinary drug diclofenac in combination with other courses. Including poisoning, lead-based use and trade, reduction in food availability, collision and electrocution. Because of energy infrastructure, habitat loss, degradation and disturbance. The proposed vulture species are included in the Raptors M O U Annex One and are listed in category one of this action plan. International cooperation will be an essential ingredient in the recovery and long-term conservation of these wide-ranging species. For this reason, also in the EU, an action plan to conserve European species is in preparation as well. Currently, only the Egyptian vulture is listed in appendix one and we believe that all critically. Endangered and endangered African Eurasian vultures should be listed as well. So the EU and its member states agree with this and forthcoming proposal to list ten species of vultures in appendix one. Thank you.
Thank you EU and and I appreciate the uh statement you've made in respect of all of the proposals. In fact, there is a um a potential for us to consider them all together, but I will continue um. And ask whether any other parties wish to comment on this particular proposal. Uh yes, we have Peru.
There are all the biological reasons. For this group of vulture species as well as the vultures in South America, they face almost the same threats. And that is why we support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much Peru and I take it that your support will extend to the other proposals we have, but may maybe I'm. I'm getting ahead of myself there. Uh do I have any objection to accepting this proposal from Pakistan, please? So I take it that the committee accepts the proposal made by Pakistan and we will transmit that recommendation to the plenary. Thank you very much. So next we have a proposal from Kenya for the inclusion of five vulture species. They're the white-headed vulture, tricot trigonoseps occipitalis, the hooded vulture, necrosirtis monocus. The white-backed vulture, gips africanus, cape vulture, gips coprotheres and repel's vulture, gips repellie on appendix one. Um do you wish to add to the uh sorry, do you wish to um introduce this proposal Kenya please?
Um thank you Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, um. Kenya is pro- proposing to list the five African vulture species. Uh in appendix one of C M S. Mister Chairman, the five African vulture species included in this proposal are all critically endangered. Or endangered and were all moved to a higher category of extinction risk. In the twenty fifteen I U C N Red List Assessment. Mister Chairman, recently published data have revealed significant and rapid Pan-African vulture declines. Uh preceded by a variety of threats, including intentional and unintentional poisoning. Believe-based use and trade, reduction in food availability. Collision and the electrocution on energy infrastructure. And habitat loss, degradation and disturbance. Mister Chairman, the five African vulture species included in this proposal were added to the Raptors M O U Annex One list of species. On the basis of evidence and their migratory behavior according to C M S definition. And categorized in the next three action plan, table one as category one globally threatened species. At Raptors M O U M O S two. Mister Chairman, just like with the other inclusion, uh Kenya therefore proposes. That the uh this convention considers listing the five species of vultures on appendix one. To enhance their conservation. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Kenya and given the discussion that we've had, I I see Ecuador um but I ask whether. There are any parties that object to this proposal, Ecuador, I'm not assuming you do, Ecuador, I'd like to hear from you though.
Thank you Chair. Recognizing that vulture species uh play a very important role in the maintenance of a healthy habitat. We support the inclusion of these species. Thank you.
Thank you Ecuador. So I'm going to make an assessment that the meeting is in support of these propos- this proposal by Kenya. Uh the secretariat of the is it the Raptors M O U would like the floor? Please, Raptors M O U.
Thank you very much Mister Chairman. As what's happened with the um earlier proposal for the four Asian species. This proposal was discussed at the C M S Scientific Council second meeting of its sessional committee. And there were some minor um amendments suggested to the proposal. And I think it would be helpful to know uh whether Kenya's proposal uh accept Kenya accepts uh these very minor changes, please.
Kenya, are you willing to respond to that question, please?
Mister Chairman, um we'll accept the minor changes as proposed by the Scientific Council. Thank you.
Thank you. So subject to the minor changes proposed by the Scientific Council, uh that's fine. Uh Peru wants the floor. Peru, are you in support of this proposal?
Support this proposal and in order to optimize the time used, we also twenty five point sixteen. All those proposals relating to vultures we support. Thank you.
Thank you Peru, the chairman loves you very much. Um. So um I take it that there is no objection to this proposal and that as amended. Um and that the meeting endorses it and will transmit that to the plenary. Thank you very much and thank you Kenya. And finally, in the list of vultures, we have two proposals for the same species. And as I said before, so the government of Israel has. A proposal for the inclusion of the lappet-faced vulture, Torgos tracheliotos on appendix one. And Saudi Arabia has a proposal for inclusion of the same species on the same appendix. So I'm going to ask Israel if they wish to briefly uh introduce it and then if Saudi Arabia wishes to comment. Um then please do so, but it's not necessary. If you wish to comment, yes. So um Israel followed by Saudi Arabia. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Um we're talking here about the lappet-faced vulture, Torgos tracheliotos. Which is a very large carrion-eating raptor occurring in Africa and near east. It is not common anywhere and they're rapidly declining populations such that there are fewer than six thousand individuals left in the wild. Of this species which is endangered. As mentioned in the proposal, the subspecies. Chorcos to uh Torgos tracheliotis negavensis bred in Israel until nineteen ninety four, but is currently extinct in Israel. We have an ex situ breeding program that has begun. We have a need for. Um more males in our breeding program and we would like to use this opportunity as a call. To range states of this species that would have males in captivity perhaps. To join us and assist us with our ex situ breeding program so that we can reintroduce the species into the wild in Israel. Uh because of Israel's successful raptor breeding programs for other species, such as the only. Breeding program that has been successful for Egyptian vultures and its strict wildlife laws. Israel is an important safe sanctuary for all migrating and breeding raptors. Um we would hope to expect to see the lappet-faced vulture in the wild in Israel in the future. Um at this time, we would like to mention that the proposal is for listing in appendix one. And the convention does accommodate the needs of traditional substance users to allow an exception. Under Article Three Paragraph Five C of the convention. And we are concerned that belief-based use of this species, once it's listed in appendix one. Might be allowed by parties using the exception allowed for traditional substance use under Article Three Paragraph Five C. We would call on parties that wish to make this allowance and to uh allow taking of the species under appendix one. To be sure that it's carefully monitored and that it is not unregulated and certainly not unsustainable. And if that does appear, then perhaps would be appropriate to withdraw the uh permits that are given under this allowance. At this time, we would uh um encourage support of the parties for listing in appendix one and hopefully not. To make Article Three Paragraph Five C allowances as much as possible. Thank you sir.
Thank you Israel and we look forward to seeing leopard-faced vultures back in your country. Uh Saudi Arabia please.
Thank you Mister Chair. Saudi Arabia are calling for supporting this proposal. Uh uh in Saudi Arabia, the lappet-faced vulture is probably the only, especially the subspecies in the defences, is the only. Uh place probably in the Arabian Peninsula with other two countries which is still breeding in that uh. Uh place and also there are some other uh work being done for protecting the species. With five protected areas we have with the breeding population. Uh although with this, all of this effort, there are some declining is going on with the species, as is. Uh uh there are some other threats it's also facing which is uh. Uh poisoning and uh disturbance and other other threats which is being mentioned in in the proposal itself. Another things we would like to uh, we need to clarify from also the secretariat before uh. Finish that in the in the documents of the uh the 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 website for the conference itself. That we see that our our uh our document is not clear, you know, it's not open from from there. And since the beginning, you know, from the conference, we didn't see it, it's open, it's only open from the. The side of the C M S, but not from the conference document. And also because I think we in 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 our document, we would like first to thanks the Raptors M O U. For helping, for uh supporting, for uh bringing this document and in the same time, we had some. Uh reference coming from Saudi Arabia and we would like to see this kind of documents out. And these reference to be in the proposal itself. Uh thank you very much.
Thank you Saudi Arabia and the secretariat assures me that they're working on accessibility of the document, apologies for that. Um so uh the question is whether the um meeting uh endorses the proposal. As a, if you like, a single proposal, um and whether we can pass that on. I don't see any objection and no requests for the flaws. Uh Saudi Arabia wish to say something more.
I would like to just to to look at for the, I I appreciate the the standing, the scientific committee. Uh opinion about the the similarity, but I think there are similarities, but there are some more reference inside the. The document, our uh our proposal which is in the document. So we would like that to uh endorse our uh. Uh document in 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 this. Thank you very much.
Thank you Saudi Arabia. So the question is whether uh the document is accepted and the uh listing uh is proposed accordingly. So um any objection? I see none, so uh the proposal for the inclusion of of this species on appendix one is endorsed. And that will be recommendation made to the plenary. Thank you very much. And I think probably we uh should give the vultures a round of applause. The next proposal is back to our hosts, the Philippines. Um it's a proposal number twenty five one seventeen. For the inclusion of the yellow-bunting embryza solfiorata on appendix two of the convention. Can you introduce this please Philippines?
Thank you Mister Chair. The species is classified as vulnerable by I U C N on account of a significant and continued population decline. With a population of around ten thousand adult individuals. It breeds exclusively in Japan and over winters mainly in the Philippines with a very small number found wintering in China. The species is threatened by a range of factors including habitat loss, trapping for bird trade and impacts from intense pesticide use. The migratory bird is important to the Philippines for its ecological value. It is hoped that by including it in appendix two of the C C M S. It will be able to raise awareness on the importance of this bird and encourage range countries to help monitor both breeding. And wintering populations and eventually reduce the threats that have been causing the observed decline in its population. Thank you Mister Chair.
Thank you Philippines. Uh do I have any comments on this proposal from the Philippines? I see none, so I therefore conclude that the meeting endorses the proposal. And that we will transmit that recommendation accordingly. Thank you Philippines. Now for the next proposal, we are going to hear from the European Union, I hope, uh because they have submitted. Uh a proposal for the inclusion of the great gray shrike, Lanius xqbitor, xqbitor. On appendix two of the convention. EU please.
Indeed Mister Chairman, you will hear from us on this species. The great gray shrike is a member of the family Lanidae, widely distributed throughout the world with the exception of South America and Australia. Many shrike species are in an unfavorable conservation status with a declining population trend. Unfortunately, this is true for this particular species as well. The great gray shrike is a songbird, but also shows characteristics of birds of prey and thus also shares some threats with the latter. The species suffered from human persecution because of its bad reputation, also similar to many birds of prey species. However, while all birds of prey are listed in appendix two, no shrikes have been listed in the C M S appendices so far. Although not globally threatened, the great gray shrike is not in a favorable conservation status and even in a very unfavorable situation in Europe. Its range has been considerably reduced over half a century and the species has already disappeared from several countries. Where it is still present, it is most often threatened. As many other species, the most serious threat is the intensification of agriculture, but several aspects of this and other factors are only poorly understood. Climate change, availability of food, persecution, as well as the use of pesticides are further serious factors which contribute to their decline. The present proposal aims at including all populations of the nominate subspecies of the great gray shrike. We hope that all parties can support our proposal.
Thank you EU for a very succinct introduction. Do I have any comments on this proposal, the great gray shrike? I see no requests for the floor, um so I conclude that the meeting supports the proposal. And that recommendation will be transmitted accordingly. Thank you EU and we'll give you the floor again for the next proposal. Which is um going down the shrike list from the greater to the to the lesser. Um inclusion of the lesser gray shrike. Um, inclusion of the Lesser Gray Shrike, Lanius minor, on Appendix Two of the convention. EU, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Lesser Gray Shrike is also a member of the family Lanidae, which is in, in a favorable conservation status with a declining population trend and severely fragmented distribution. This species behavior is similar to that of a small raptor, though it is not as pronounced as that of the Great Gray Shrike. If it is, it has also suffered from human persecution. Like other songbirds, the Lesser Gray Shrike carries out very long migrations with leaded, with leaded to Southern Africa every year. Similar to other species of passerine birds in rural areas, it has been severely affected by the intensification of agricultural practices. But like its bigger sister species, some factors are still poorly understood. Climate change, availability of food, persecution as pests, and in eastern countries, trapping of the species as baits for capturing sparrowhogs for falconry purposes are further serious factors which contribute to its decline. The Lesser Gray Shrike is not in a favorable state of conservation globally. In Europe, it is even in a very unfavorable situation. Its range has been considerably reduced for half a century and the species has already disappeared from several countries. Where it is still present, it is most often threatened, particularly in Western Europe. The present proposal aims at including the entire European population of the species in Appendix Two. We ask all parties to support our proposal.
Thank you, EU. Um, and as with the other proposal, I ask whether there are any parties that wish to comment. I take that as support and uh conclude that the committee supports the proposal and we will transmit that to the plenary accordingly. Thank you. So that's an applause for the birds as a whole. And being a bird person, I'm, I'm always enthusiastic talking about birds. Um, but we are moving back into the water. And so now we are going to go to the uh, the marine species, to the fish. Um, and I have a proposal for the inclusion of the whale shark, Rinkodon tipus, on Appendix One. And that's a joint proposal from the Philippines, Israel, and Sri Lanka. So can I ask uh which party is going to introduce that, please? Philippines are proposing to introduce. Thank you. Um, let's hear from you Philippines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The governments of the Philippines, Israel, and Sri Lanka propose for the inclusion of the whale shark on Appendix One of the convention and migratory species and at the same time maintain its status under Appendix Two of the CMS. The current condition of the whale shark meets the criteria for inclusion in the Appendix One listing due to its clear migratory habit and a decline of its status from vulnerable in two thousand to endangered in twenty sixteen on the IOCN red list with global population decline of greater than or equal to fifty percent due to many factors. Many CMS parties which are range states have lethal protection currently in place for the species where protection exists for the species and/or their habitats. These are compromised by threats in surrounding non-CMS parties. Major contemporary threats to whale sharks include fisheries catches, bycatch in nets, and vessel strikes and unsustainable tourism practices. An Appendix One listing expected to lead to an increased attention to legislative protection in range states and heightened awareness to support conservation efforts on whale sharks. Whale shark is included in Annex One, Highly Migratory Species of the United Nations Convention on the Law of the Sea and in Appendix Two of the Convention on International Trade Endangered Species of Wild Flora and Fona. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Philippines. Um, do I have any parties who wish to speak to this proposal? Um, Israel and India, just, I, I'll, I'll let Sri Lanka go uh before India. Thank you, but so we have Israel, Sri Lanka, and India, Israel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as we are co-proponents of this proposal together with Philippines and Sri Lanka, just very briefly, we would like to state that the um whale shark does not occur in our Mediterranean waters, but it does occur in our Red Sea uh coast after having migrated through the Red Sea. And many of the Red Sea countries do not have any protection for the whale shark. All sharks are fully protected in Israel. And we would call on the other Red Sea countries to um, after the species passes and is listed in Appendix One, to look at their legislation and their practices and improve the protection of the red, of the whale shark um in other countries in the Red Sea. We would also encourage parties to remember the species is already included in Appendix Two and that um, Appendix Two listing, of course, will be maintained as part of this proposal, not removed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Israel. And the third co-proponent, I call on Sri Lanka.
Thank you, Chair. Sri Lanka, as a co-proponent on this proposal, encourages other parties in the room to please join us in supporting this critical proposal. Whale shark populations are in decline throughout their range due to multiple issues, as stated by the Philippines, one of which, of course, is bycatch, even affecting individuals within Sri Lankan waters. Despite our National Fisheries Act now fully protecting this species, we are concerned, given their migratory nature, of declines throughout the Indian Ocean and their total range. We are confident that an Appendix One listing will encourage stricter measures by range states and also inspire innovative regional cooperation actions to ensure that declines are halted, giving populations the opportunity to recover. We urge you all to please join us in protecting this amazing animal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sri Lanka. Um, and now I have Peru followed by Ecuador. Peru, please.
Si, eh, Peru desea apoyar todas las especies, todas las especies aquáticas. La cual es con cuerda, toda la política nacional de conservación. Which are in line with the national policy for the conservation of these species, including for the mantar rays. And the shark species in particular, the whale shark, we recently banned its capture. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have Ecuador, uh, and then I have uh India and uh, oh, sorry, Ecuador, Senegal, and India.
Gracias, señor presidente, por darme una vez más intervención. Conociendo que los tubrones son especies. Being aware that sharks are a species that are important to ecosystems and that it's a species that is endangered under the IOCN, Ecuador supports this proposal for this inclusion of the whale shark and hopes that all other countries will be able to support it too. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Peru, and thank you again for, for brief interventions. I'll, I'll go through the list that I have. Um, but I, I'm seeing only support so far. So uh, next I have Senegal. Uh, Peru, could you turn your microphone off, please?
Merci, monsieur le président. Uh, cette espèce a pratiquement disparu des toutes les galeries de la mer.
Disappeared from Senegalese waters and has, that was in fact quite a long time ago, and we very much support this proposal for that reason. Thank you.
India, please.
Thank you, Chairperson. Uh, India is an important range for this species whale shark. It was one of the early countries to protect the shark. We, we were also for the proponents for the fish and cites. In fact, uh, we are also concerned with the uh declining population and the concern for the species. And we also appreciate the fact that many CMS parties have also uh regarded this as one of the major issues with the bycatch or vessel strikes of the species. The inclusion of whale shark on Appendix One will promote improved protection of the main aggression sites and encourage actions to address threats such as bycatch, vessel strikes, and impact of unsustainable tourism practices on the species. We wish unif vocally to support the proposal of, a joint proposal from Philippines and Sri Lanka. And uh, we are sure the, the listing will now will be implemented in full force in our country as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, India, and I call on the EU, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a slightly longer statement, but it will cover on behalf of the EU and all its member states, all the aquatic species, so therefore I ask for your indulgence. The EU and its member states welcome the listing proposals for all these important species. Given the severe decline suffered throughout their range, regional and international conservation action is needed as a matter of priority. We are pleased to inform the delegates that we can support all the proposals made for the listing of the fish species. We would like to thank the proponent countries on the hard work they have put into these proposals. And for the example, they are setting in marine species conservation and management. We would especially like to commend our host country for proposing the Appendix One listing of the whale shark and the Appendix Two listing of the white-spotted wedgefish. This sends a strong message globally on their commitment to ending unsustainable tourism and fishing practices. All these species fulfill the criteria for listing of the CMS and fall within the rules of the common fisheries policy, which, among other relevant tools, offers appropriate instruments to contribute to managing their protection. The EU believes that these proposals will lead to an enhanced international cooperation and better ocean governance as they complement existing protection measures under other processes. A number of these species are targeted for their fins and the EU have been front runners in putting in place conservation and management measures aiming at limiting and/or eradicating shark finning, as well as ensuring the protection of specific shark species, mainly through prohibitions to take on board that have been assessed as endangered by the scientific committees of these bodies. Ensuring effective fisheries management is integral in achieving the sustainable use of these ecologically and for many of them commercially important species. In light of these species' importance in the ecosystem, their intrinsic vulnerability, and slow recovery rates from over-exploitation, it is crucial we adopt a precautionary approach to implement management measures and actively seek opportunities to work through other international fora and in particular, regional fisheries management organizations in order to achieve the best possible outcomes for this important group of animals. The EU calls on the CMS Secretariat to work in cooperation with other MEAs, regional fisheries management organizations, and IOCM to enhance consistency and complementarity by inter alia further promoting efforts on making best use of all available and relevant scientific information and to improve the framework of cooperation between relevant multilateral and regional instruments. In closing, the EU and its member states would like to strongly support the listing proposals and would like to thank the proponents in bringing these proposals to the parties. Thank you.
Thank you, EU, and thank you for making your comments on all of the um ensuing fish proposals. Um, I have a request from Greenpeace. Greenpeace, please.
Um, thank you, Chair. I am making this intervention on behalf of Greenpeace, Blue Resources Trust, Defenders of Wildlife, Humane Society International, the International Fund for Animal Welfare, the Puteritable Trust, Pro Wildlife, Project Aware, and the Wildlife Conservation Society, Save Philippine Seas Marine Wildlife Watcher of the Philippines and Large Marine Vertebrates Research Institute Philippines. Um, we are delighted to see that action is continuing here at the twelfth conference of the parties to further establish CMS as an international convention fundamental to the comprehensive global effort needed to better manage and conserve the whale sharks and race. It is hugely encouraging to see that this vulnerable and largely unmanaged group of species has again become a priority here in Manila. We applaud the leadership shown by our host, the Philippines, along with Honduras, Israel, Mauritania, Monaco, Samoa, Senegal, Sri Lanka, and Togo to propose listings of sharks and race species on the convention's appendices. It is also timely to see Appendix One listings proposal for some of the most endangered species such as whale and angel sharks and Mediterranean sea population of the common guitarfish. Appendix Two listings proposals for species such as the common guitarfish, white-spotted wedgefish, dusky and blue shark are urgently needed to further better coordinated international action and multilateral cooperation to prevent further population declines. CMS listings and enforcement should encourage and strengthen complementary domestic and regional fisheries management measures. Also of note is the momentum behind the CMS Shark MOU back in the city where the agreement was finalized. We commend Bine, Brazil, Ecuador, and Sri Lanka for their further commitment as new signatories to the CMS Sharks MOU to ensure this species' survival and thrive and continue to fulfill their key roles in the ocean ecosystems of the world. As the scientific council clearly noted, all of these species meet the CMS listing criteria and are recommended for adoption. We call upon all parties present to adhere to the scientific advice and adopt these important proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Greenpeace, and thank you for uh commenting on behalf of a number of groups and also on uh a number of uh proposals at once. That helps me. Um, do I have any other requests for the floor on this proposal? Sorry. I don't see any objections. Um, so can I take it that the committee accepts the proposal by the Philippines, Israel, and Sri Lanka um to list the whale shark on Appendix One of the convention? So the committee accepts it and we will transmit that accordingly. Thank you very much. We needed to stretch our legs. Right, ladies and gentlemen, the next proposal is number twenty-five point one point two one, uh, Rev One. Proposal for the inclusion of the dusky shark, Kakarinus obscurus, in Appendix Two. And that proposal is from the government of Honduras. Is Honduras uh ready to introduce that, please? Yes, um, we, we'll move on. We're not quite ready for that one. So uh, we'll move on to the next proposal. Thank you for your patience. Uh, the next one is twenty-five point one point two-two. And that's the proposal for the inclusion of the blue shark, Pionachi glauca, on Appendix Two of the convention. And that proposal is from jointly from the governments of Samoa and Sri Lanka. Um, is Samoa going to introduce this or Sri Lanka's? Samoa, please. Uh, I give you the floor, Samoa.
Thank you, Chair. As it's the first time Samoa's taken the floor, I wish to acknowledge and thank the governments of Philippines for its warm hospitality in hosting this COP twelve. On behalf of the government of Samoa, I have the honor of presenting to you a proposal, which is a joint proposal together with Sri Lanka to list blue sharks in Appendix Two of CMS. The twenty-one island countries and territories in the Pacific region are all large ocean states with management responsibilities of over ten percent of the planet's ocean area with migratory marine species connecting us as people of the Pacific, but more importantly, people of the ocean. Over the past one fifty years, our Pacific people have seen their iconic species hunted or fished by industrialized and developed countries from outside our region, and many have been reduced to depressingly low levels. Samoa has therefore opted to play a more prominent role in the global community to promote awareness, conservation, and importantly, to promote the link between conservation and sustainable fishing. We have been inspired by the success of our Pacific island colleagues and other small island countries in promoting the listing of sharks, raising other migratory species on the CMS appendices. And it is my privilege to present to you Samoa's proposal to list blue sharks on Appendix Two and to thank the governments of Sri Lanka as a co-proponent and Fiji, Cook Islands, and Palau, as well as other parties who have also supported our joint proposal. Samoa has reviewed the comments from stakeholders that have been received by the Secretariat, and I would like to make just a few comments. While stock assessments undertaken by one of the RFMOs found blue shark stocks be able to sustain the current levels of take, which have increased by fifty percent in recent years, this might not be the situation in other ocean areas. Furthermore, as the RFMO South noted, stock assessments are an inherent Furthermore, as the RFMO itself noted, stock assessments are inherently inaccurate exercise, even if the data provided is comprehensive and reliable. So great many assumptions need to be made in any assessment. Unfortunately, the reality is that for most of the industrialized shark fisheries and certainly for the Pacific Ocean, the observer coverage on board longline vessels is extremely low, between two to five percent. Additionally, many vessels, tranship on the high seas with no observer on board either the fishing vessel or the receiving vessel. Therefore, the data that go into a stock assessment are all likelihood unreliable and more likely to underestimate than to overestimate the extent of stock depletion. Another feature of fisheries managers' role feels that stock assessments tend to ignore ecological impacts. And in the Pacific, we are convinced that the overfishing of sharks is causing clear and demonstrable impacts on the traffic relationships between the fish species on our corals, contributing to a decline in reef health throughout our region. In conclusion, the fishery for blue sharks has been estimated to remove twenty million animals every year. And this may well be the single largest removal of a large wild vertebrate from the ecosystems in the world. Listing blue sharks on appendix two of CMS will not shut down the fishery nor have any negative impact. However, it will help raise awareness among CMS parties on the need to coordinate proactive responses and collaborate better to find out more about the real status and trends of this iconic ocean traveler and take further steps if necessary to ensure the maintenance and presence of healthy population of blue sharks for future generations of Pacific islanders and the world to enjoy. Samoa wishes to encourage the support of all parties to our joint proposal with Sri Lanka and reiterate again the CMS powerful theme, "Their future is our future." Thank you.
Bafta la, Samoa. Thank you very much. Would Sri Lanka like to make a statement, please?
Thank you, Chair. Our colleagues from Samoa have comprehensively summarized their joint proposal for blue sharks, which was also recommended for listing by the scientific council. We wish to stress that for Sri Lanka and many other developing ring states, ensuring sustainability of these species is essential for fishery livelihoods and economy. The fact that major blue shark fishing nations are also strongly supporting this proposal clearly echoes our views. These sharks are one of the most fished and heavily traded sharks, but still lack management, making them a high-risk species that certainly requires the status offered by an appendix two listing. Due to significant declines, they are assessed by the IOCM as near-threatened globally and critically endangered in the Mediterranean. Current measures in place by RFMOs for sharks have not yet halted blue shark declines. And in the IOTC region, trends indicate a move toward a state of being overfished. This is unacceptable. And Sri Lanka, along with all other supporters, are committed to action, also through the voluntary Sharks MOU that we just signed this week. Given the pressure on these species, it is critical that we do not wait too long and then require even more drastic action. This listing now will help raise awareness and encourage regional cooperation to ensure sustainable fisheries that are critical for livelihoods and economies can continue. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sri Lanka. Do I have any other requests for the floor on this matter? India, then Ecuador, followed by New Zealand. So far, so India, followed by Cook Islands. So the list I have so far is India, Ecuador, New Zealand, Cook Islands. India, please.
Thank you, Chairperson. We also believe firmly that action for blue sharks required right now. It is also a species which is found in the coastal waters of western India. We apprehend that the species' number is on the decline and it requires immediate protective support from the international community. The effective management for the species is also one of the key things that has to be looked into. And in our short intervention, we would thank the government of Sri Lanka, government of Samoa in bringing this proposal for the protection of the species in the future. By doing so, we fully support the proposal. One second. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, India, and I now call on Ecuador.
Gracias, señor presidente. Debo mencionar que Ecuador cuenta...
Ecuador has a management plan for sharks, which is also has its main aim, which is to guarantee the sustainable management of sharks and race in Ecuadorian waters, covered under the Code of Contact for Responsible Fisheries and in national, regional and international laws to which our country has subscribed. So Ecuador supports this inclusion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ecuador, and I now call on New Zealand.
Thank you, Chair. New Zealand has concerns relating to the proposal to list blue shark on appendix two of CMS. New Zealand is an advocate of effective, science-based species conservation and management. In the case of blue shark, we recognize the potential value of this listing for some regions, such as the Mediterranean. However, it is unclear how a CMS appendix two listing will significantly benefit the conservation status of global blue shark populations. Regional fisheries management organizations have conducted stock assessments in the Pacific and Atlantic oceans that indicate that those blue shark stocks are healthy. While there are currently no catch limits for shark species in these organizations, measures are in place, including those to ensure data collection to support stock assessments. We therefore have some concerns regarding the rationale for the global listing proposal. It is important to carefully and objectively consider the case for each listing proposal in order to maintain the credibility of CMS. Not to do so risks undermining CMS appendix listings, potentially diverting attention from more deserving or at-risk species, especially for which there are no existing management mechanisms. We are also concerned that the listing of blue sharks may create a disincentive for large fishing nations to join either CMS or the MOU sharks. Inclusion of such states was an aim discussed at the MOU sharks meeting of signatories in Costa Rica last year. While we do not intend to block consensus on agreement to this proposal, we would like our concerns to be noted in the meeting report. Thank you.
Thank you, New Zealand, and I understand that the secretariat has received that statement, so thank you for that. The next request I have is from the Cook Islands, followed by... I'll tell you who follows it shortly. Cook Islands, please.
Thank you, Chair. As this is the first time for the Cook Islands to address the floor, I would like to express gratitude to the Philippines government for its hospitality and hosting of CMS COP twelve. Chair, the Cook Islands supports the proposal made by Samoa in the Philippines, inclusion of the blue shark to the appendix two listing. As a large ocean state shark sanctuary, we have heavy reliance on marine resources to ensure healthy marine ecosystems and to provide secure and sustainable source of food for our island's people. Sharks play a pivotal role with ensuring marine ecosystems are balanced and remain healthy and reiterate our support for the blue sharks inclusion to appendix two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have any other parties who wish to... Norway, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm afraid that I have to lie in our position with what was said by New Zealand. I think it's important that the CMS follows its own criteria for listing and being based mainly on sound science. Listening to the proponents, it seems as if you could actually turn their arguments upside down. You indeed have lack of data on the OFTAC, which was said inherently is applicable to almost all species.
Excuse me, Norway. Could you maybe speak a bit closer to the microphone?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
As was said by the proponent, it is inherent in many species that a lack of data is there. It's mainly based on the CPU, actually, when we describe the development of these populations. So it did surprise us a bit that this species actually was put forward as a listing proposal. Then, as was stated by New Zealand, there are a number of other species that certainly would also qualify in this context. And that will indeed undermine the relationship with relevant RFMOs. And of course, we all know that there is a strong initiative by FEO in this context as a very relevant organization for management of stocks. Certainly, you could say that the Sharks MOU would contribute in directing focus into collecting information on this species and other listed species. But to sum up, we still think it's premature, especially in relation to what the text of the proponent is. It's simply lacking in data. As was stated by New Zealand, we will not block any consensus. It appears to be a consensus on this, but just to make for the record, we would like to see our statement to be included. Thank you.
Thank you, Norway, and feel free to submit your comment for the record to the secretariat. Next, I have Fiji, please.
Thank you, Chair. Fiji would like to support the proposal put forward by governments of Samoa and Sri Lanka. Blue sharks are found in the Pacific and are often reported by observers as one of the shark species commonly caught on longlines. Inclusion of appendix two would raise awareness on the need for management of blue sharks by all-range states and fishing states. It would also ensure that international cooperation is prioritized with measures adopted by the regional fisheries management organizations put in place to regulate catches in every ocean. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiji, and Brazil would like to take the floor. Brazil, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brazil is due on this conference, and we already adopt the Sharks MOU. We are really willing to work in progress to sharks conservation. We are a relevant player on the sharks issues at Sires, and we'd like to express our support to this inclusion of the blue shark at this COP. Thank you.
Thank you, Brazil. So I've had two commentaries, if you like, on the proposal from New Zealand and Norway, but neither of both explained that they would not block consensus. Otherwise, I've had support from all other interventions. Is there anyone else who has a contrary view? If not, can I take it that the committee supports the proposal? And that will be transmitted to the plenary accordingly as a recommendation. Thank you. Now, before we go on, I understand that Honduras is in the room, but I think what we'll do is we'll go through the list and come back to the Honduras proposal at the end of these various shark proposals. Thank you. So that means that the next proposal is the one for the inclusion of the angel shark, Squatina squatina, on appendix one and two of the convention. And that's been submitted by Monaco. That's twenty-five point one point two-three. And Monaco, I invite you to introduce it, please.
Thank you, Chair. La principauté de Monaco a l'honneur de présenter le document vingt-cinq point un point deux. On the inclusion of the angel shark, Squatina squatina, on appendices one and two of the convention. The angel shark is a benthic shark, a medium-sized shark, with continental populations in the Mediterranean and the adjacent seas, as well as the northeastern Central Atlantic. Traditionally, it went from Scandinavia to West Africa and included the Mediterranean and the Black Sea. However, although it was very widespread in the nineteenth and beginning of the twentieth century, overfishing and high bycatch rates have fragmented and deteriorated the population. Squatina squatina is considered critically endangered on the IOCM red list since 2006. The species is also on appendix three of the Bern Convention and appendix two of the Protocol for Especially Protected Areas and Biodiversity of the Barcelona Convention. With respect to its migrations, the angel shark migrates from north to south and from the high seas to the coast. Unfortunately, its migrations are little known because the species is so rare. En raison du déclin drastique qu'a connu la population de cet espèce, ainsi que les potentielles menaces qui représentent toujours des captures accidentelles dans le cadre de la pêche côtière. La pêche créative sans inscription, la collecte ciblée et destruction de la victoire. Le Squatina squatina rentrait l'écrivain de l'inclusion à l'Annexe un. Squatina meets the criteria for inclusion in appendix one. This inclusion would also make it possible to not push this species toward extinction with legal protection throughout the range states. En parallèle, l'inscription à l'Annexe deux permettrait d'améliorer la collaboration pour les états de l'ère de la migration de l'enfouissement. Au travers d'un certain nombre d'actions, c'est que, en gros, une inscription à l'Annexe un nous randome d'entendre les rocan migrateurs. Inclusion in appendix one of the sharks and... At the next meeting of signatories, which should take place at the end of 2018, ou encore la tenue d'ateliers régionaux, disant à proposer tous ces parties prenantes pour agir en faveur de Squatina squatina. À ce titre, la délégation molégase souhaite attirer l'attention des parties sur le document vingt-six point deux point cinq. Relatif à une proposition d'action en faveur de l'enfouissement également de l'inscription de cette confréance. Which is also submitted to this conference of the parties for adoption. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Monaco. Do I have any other parties who wish to take the floor on this? I see a request for the floor from Senegal. Senegal, please.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. L'ange de la mer, comme l'a dit Anto Monaco, est une espèce listée dans la liste rouge des espèces menacées et classée espèce en danger critique d'extinction. Son inscription entre dans le cadre de notre politique de sauvegarde des espèces menacées, surtout des espèces marines. C'est pour ces raisons que le gouvernement du Sénégal soutient vivement cette proposition et demande aux autres parties d'appuyer cette proposition. Merci.
Thank you, Senegal. Any other parties wish to take the floor? Yes, I see a request from Morocco. Morocco, please.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Étant donné que le Maroc prend la parole pour la première fois, le Maroc souhaite remercier le gouvernement du Philippines pour son accueil chaleureux. Le Maroc soutient la proposition de...
Supports the proposal to include the angel shark on the appendices of the convention. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Morocco. Any more comments on this? So I'm going to take them together, given that the first one is for a proposal from Israel for appendix one for one population and appendix two, and the remaining proposals are for appendix two. So as before, where we had multiple proposals on the same issue, we'll go through in the order that we have the parties. I'll ask Israel to introduce their proposal and invite the other proponents of the related proposals to also speak before we conclude. Israel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will defer to my colleagues from West Africa and let them speak of the proposal. I will defer to my colleagues from West Africa and let them speak of the West African population and address my comments specifically to the Mediterranean population of the species. The Mediterranean population of this species has been extirpated or overfished and is no longer found in the Western Mediterranean at all. It's critically endangered in the Mediterranean, though it does still occur in some areas of the Eastern Mediterranean. It is currently, the EU, for example, has regulations prohibiting the fishing of this species in its Atlantic waters. And we were pleased to learn from the EU that they have they've support this proposal to include the species in Appendix 1, so that there will be no taking also in the Mediterranean waters. We are extremely concerned that there still continues to be fishing of this species by range states in the Mediterranean where the species still occurs. And our reason for advancing this proposal is to lead to an Appendix 1 listing and no take. As what we stated in conjunction with the proposal for the Lapit face vulture, and the convention does have a loophole. Article 3, paragraph 5c of the convention makes allowance for the needs of traditional substance users to take Appendix 1 species. We would encourage any party that will look at this allowance and to allow continuing taking of this species in the Mediterranean to set up a POP regulation for monitoring this traditional substance fishing in order to ensure that the conservation status of that population does not become unfavourable or worse than it is. And in the event that the conservation status of the domestic population does worsen, we would expect and hope that the country would withdraw these allowances under Article 3, paragraph 5c. In conclusion, Mr. Chair, we would hope that the parties will support an Appendix 1 listing for the species in the Mediterranean and encourage that any traditional substance use is sustainable and regulated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Israel. So I will now invite the other proponents, starting with, and you don't have to speak, but you certainly, I would encourage you if you wish. So the next is the Islamic Republic of Mauritania. Mauritania, do you wish to speak? No, not necessarily. So we'll move on to Senegal. Do you wish to address us on this range of proposals, Senegal?
Merci, Monsieur le Président.
Thank you.
Comme vous l'avez rappelé tout à l'heure, trois propositions, inscription à l'Annexe 1, de la guitare commune est ciblée par la pêche côtière. Senegal, Mauritania and Togo have the same aim in doing so. The common guitar fish is targeted by coastal fisheries for its meat and its fins during the breeding season and is also a victim of net and troll bycatch. The species has sharply declined and is now endangered on the IUCN Red List. Migration goes from deep waters to breeding and... And the breeding part of the population is very vulnerable to bycatch by unregulated coastal fishing. We should point out that the fins of guitar fish are highly sought after by international trade because of their density and quality. Demand for shark fins, for shark fin soup has been the main driver for the targeting of this rhinobatus species along the coast of West Africa. In West Africa, Cape Verde, Mauritania, Senegal, Guinea, Guinea-Bissau, Kenya, Sierra Leone, Liberia. An increase in fishing pressure began at the end of the 1990s and led to a sharp decline in the size of individuals and a huge increase in the number of guitar fish landed. Some parts of its range, this species disappeared and others it's critically endangered. Rhinobatus has probably vanished from Mediterranean waters in Spain, France and Italy because of intensive fishing pressure recorded over a long period of time. The scientific council of CMS has reviewed the proposal and recommends that this species be listed on Appendix 2 of the convention. Distinguished delegates, if this proposal is accepted, rhinobatus will be considered for the, for listing on the Shark MOU. Regional and international cooperation to improve the conservation status of this species will be a priority. This will make it, we want to regulate targeted fishing and bycatch especially associated with the migration and reproductive season. We want to ensure that the Mediterranean stocks can recover, also in Southern Europe and West Africa. The Senegalese government is willing to cooperate with the other range states on a series of concerted measures to this end. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senegal. I now invite Togo, if you wish to comment.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Je crois que ayant collaboré, nous avons fait un parti et apporté notre contribution à l'élaboration de cette proposition nous nous emmène la déclaration de délégués.
I think that I can simply say that I agree with everything that Senegal has just said. Our arguments for the inclusion of this species are the same, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Togo. Any other parties wish to comment on this? We have Australia. Australia, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can I congratulate the countries of Israel, Mauritania, Senegal and Togo for bringing forward this proposal? And I want to stress at the outset that Australia supports the listing of the common guitar fish on Appendix 1 in the Mediterranean and on Appendix 2 in the whole range of the species. But Australia actually seeks some clarification on a matter of process under the convention. Article 11 of the convention sets out the process for amending the appendices to the convention. And paragraph 3 of Article 11 allows for comments on the text by parties not less than sixty days before this meeting commences. Australia did indeed submit comments on this proposal. In fact, on the proposals from Mauritania, Senegal and Togo, which erroneously list Australia as a range state for this species on the basis of Australian vessels operating within the range. I can confirm that Australia has no such vessels operating off the west coast of Africa or the Mediterranean. And we therefore respectfully requested that Australia be removed from those three nominations. I'm just, would seek clarification on the process for those comments that Australia submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Australia, and certainly the secretariat will respond to that. I may allow them to confer for a short while and see whether there are any other parties who wish to comment on the proposal. And in fact, there's, we should seek a response to this before we decide whether or not to accept the proposal, I suspect. But I don't think it's going to prevent us from accepting it if the parties so wish. So the secretariat ready to provide a response? No, do any other parties? Yes, I have, Monaco wishes to take the floor. Monaco, please.
Thank you, Chair. La principauté de Monaco soutient l'inscription de la guitare de mer commune. The common guitar fish on appendices 1 and 2 of the convention. Thanks the proponents of the proposals. We'd like especially as a Mediterranean country to thank Israel for having made a proposal for the Mediterranean proposal of this species for Annex 1. Thank you, Annex 1, thank you.
Thank you, Monaco. Any other requests for the floor on this one? If not, I'll just seek whether the secretariat is able to respond to Australia's query, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, I mean normally comments are for the benefit of other parties, to know other parties' views on proposals. And normally we expect a proponent to revise a proposal. However, in this case, because it appears to be a factual error, the secretariat has revised the project, the proposal overnight, and we apologize to Australia.
Thank you for the question and thank you for the clarification, secretariat. So with that correction made to the proposal, I now, I don't see any more requests, so we can take it that the committee endorses the proposal and therefore, well, I'll just clarify what we're endorsing here. We're effectively endorsing the proposal of Israel, which includes the Mediterranean population of the species on Appendix 1 and includes the whole species on Appendix 2. Is that clear? So with that clarification, we endorse the proposal and we'll make that submission to the plenary accordingly. Thank you. The next proposal is in document 25.1.25 Rev 1, and that's the proposal for the inclusion of the white-spotted wedgefish, Rinco betis australier, in Appendix 2 of the convention. And the proposal is from the Philippines. I invite the Philippines, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The government of the Philippines proposes for the inclusion of the white-spotted wedgefish in Appendix 2. Our Australier is listed as vulnerable in 2003 on the IUCN Red List with population declines driven by overfishing in targeted or bycatch fisheries, primarily for their fins, which are extremely valuable in international trade. Newer information shows severe local population declines, estimated between fifty to eighty percent over the last three decades, thus considered as endangered due to intensive fishing pressure most likely to continue in the future. Our Australier considered a highly mobile species occurs more widely than was previously recorded from Southeast Asia and Australia as far as India and the Arabian Sea region and Eastern Africa. The species is poorly studied. Information on the species' population structure and movements are thus limited and inferred from closely related species. Episodic migration is reported likely to occur particularly in Indonesia and Australia and throughout this species' range due to the close proximity of international borders in the region. Our Australier inhabit coastal areas such as enclosed bays, estorres and also coral reef areas, which are also subjected to various threats. There is little to no protection for the species and/or their habitats in its range states. An Appendix 2 listing is proposed to initiate collaborative management of this species by range states through CMS itself along with domestic action that could be coordinated through the possible inclusion of our Australier on the CMS Global Memorandum of Understanding on the Conservation of Migratory Sharks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Philippines. Do I have any requests for the floor to comment on the proposal? Yes, I've got a flag up down there. Can you turn it around, please, to Bahrain? Bahrain, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since this is the first time for Bahrain to take the floor, we would like to express our best wishes and congratulations to you, Mr. Chair, and to the government of Philippines for well-organising this important meeting. According to the most recent assessment made by IUCN and Abu Dhabi in February this year, we still have the white-spotted wedgefish in our seawater. They are very rare and considered endangered according to the IUCN. And we need to improve their conservation status. Therefore, we appreciate the proposal by our host country and would very much welcome it to pass at this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and apologies for slightly breaking with protocol and bringing in an observer first, but we appreciated hearing from you. That was appreciated, thank you. And so I now have parties, Australia and then Fiji. Australia, please.
Thank you, Chair. I want to start by thanking the host country, the Philippines, on the discussions that the Philippines and Australia have had over the past few days and in the aquatic working group. And thank the Philippines for some revisions to the listing proposal, which I believe will become a document 25.1.25 Rev 2 shortly. That revision now includes an updated distribution map and associated text. Based on this revised distribution map, as the Philippines kindly pointed out, the number of parties where the species occurs in shallow coastal waters has increased significantly. The listing proposal also now includes a revised list of range states, which highlights those parties that have the species occurring in their coastal waters. Australia is not questioning whether this species has an unfavorable conservation status. It undoubtedly does in large parts of its range. The question that remains for Australia is whether the species meets the first test for including species on either appendix to the convention, that is, whether the species migrates predictably and cyclically. Recently published genetic work on this species appears to show only episodic migration between Australia, excuse me, and Indonesia. Not regular or predictable migration. Genetic markers indicate the species does not mix regularly or in significant numbers. In fact, the species occurring in Australian waters has less vertebrae than the species in other parts of its range. Australia very much appreciates the discussions we've had with the Philippines and the opportunity provided to us to express these concerns. Australia's intention is to make a very short statement regarding this listing proposal at the plenary on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Australia. I now call on Fiji, followed by India.
Thank you, Chair. Fiji would like to support the Philippines in their proposal to list the white-spotted wedgefish on Appendix 2 of CMS. As a fellow island nation, we depend heavily on our marine resources and stress the critical need to work with our neighbours to ensure regional consensus and cooperation to support the management of this species. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiji, and India, please.
Thank you, Chairperson. We also support the proposal from the Philippines. This is also a species which is found in the waters of our country. And very little is known about the species. And we understand there has been a decline of the species globally. And this prioritisation and including it in the Appendix 2 is what is perhaps required need of the hour, which will enable us for better research of the species so that we can coordinate via CMS to properly protect the species in the future. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, India. Do I have any other requests for the floor? Yes, we have Cook Islands, followed by, over there, there's a shiny sign. We'll find out who you are soon. Cook Islands.
Thank you, Chair. The Cook Islands support the Philippines' proposal and would be happy to see the white-spotted wedgefish added to Appendix 2 listing. The available information does support declining populations of the species in almost all its range and will benefit from conservation measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Cook Islands. Any other parties? Country observers, Sri Lanka, please.
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to say that we also support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Sri Lanka. No other parties? I have the Haribon Foundation. Please take...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am making this intervention in behalf of NGOs for Fisheries Reform, NFR, Haribon Foundation, Tubataha Management Office, TMO. Reform, NFR, Haribon Foundation, Tubataha Management Office, TMO, Communities Organized for Resource Allocation, Cora, Coastal Conservation and Education Foundation, CCEF, Green Fins, Project Shark Link, Large Marine Vertebrae Research Institute Philippines, Lamave, Reef World, Reef Check Philippines, Oceana Philippines, WWF Philippines, Save Philippine Seas, Marine Wildlife Watch of the Philippines, Greenpeace. We, a coalition of Philippine and international NGOs, strongly support the inclusion of the white-spotted wedgefish, Rhenco betis australier, in Appendix Two. Classified as vulnerable by the IUCN, the white-spotted wedgefish has experienced alarming population decline as it has been heavily affected by target and by-catch fisheries throughout their range, which includes some of the world's most heavily-fished coastal regions. The fins are highly valued and comprise a significant portion of the international fin trade. The wedgefish is one of the top three shark families with the highest risk of extinction, according to the IUCN. This is a species that is heavily exploited throughout its range, is poorly studied, and very little is known about its basic ecology. We risk losing this animal forever before we fully understand it. Therefore, it is crucial that comprehensive management and conservation measures are coordinated across its range to ensure its survival. Its inclusion in Appendix Two is a much-needed step to bolster its protection now. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Haribon Foundation. No other requests for India? You, no, that's, thank you. Right, okay. Taking note of Australia's intervention and assuming that this doesn't mean Australia wishes to block consensus, I take it that the committee accepts the proposal and that will be, that recommendation will be made to the plenary. Thank you very much. So that's the, that species. So we haven't quite finished the fish because we need to go back to Honduras, and that is Proposal twenty-five point one point two one, the Document twenty-five point one point two one Rev One, proposal for the inclusion of the dusky shark, Accharinus obscurus, in Appendix Two. Are you ready Honduras?
Si. Buenas tardes, señor presidente. Como es la primera vez que el Congreso de Honduras va a participar, quiere darle las gracias a Filipinas por ser tan buen albitrio y haber desarrollado esta copa.
Honduras propone incluir al tiburón oscuro.
Honduras proposes the inclusion of the dusky shark in Appendix Two of the Convention. Since it is a species that is highly vulnerable, is highly vulnerable to over-exploitation, since its fins are some of the most expensive in the market, and its meat is also highly in demand. Due to the characteristics of the dusky shark, it has a very low reproduction rate, just one offspring every two or three years, and the high migration, we've been able to measure that a juvenile shark at one year has covered more than seven hundred nautical miles and an adult shark over two thousand. So due to these various characteristics, we propose that we list the dusky shark in Appendix Two. And so we request the support of other parties. Thank you.
Thank you Honduras. Thank you very much. Any parties wish to take the floor? We've got Ecuador and Israel. Ecuador, please.
Gracias, señor presidente. Reconociendo que los tiburones arenosos migran entre aguas internacionales donde la pesca es una mayor amenaza, sin embargo, en el Ecuador la presencia de este especie en las capturas comerciales es esporádica, por lo que se requiere una mayor acción en toda su área de estudio y protección.
Need greater action throughout its range area with concerted measures. So Ecuador supports the inclusion of this species, just as the government of Peru does. Thank you.
Thank you, Ecuador. Any other requests? No, I don't see any. Oh, Israel, I beg your pardon. Israel and then Argentina. Israel.
Thank you, Chair. We would like to point out that the proposal and the IUCN data state that the species is very rare in the Mediterranean, when in fact, studies done by Israel have shown that it's actually rather common in Israeli waters, and that there's apparently a large amount of misidentification going on between the morphologically similar species Carcarinus plumbeus, which is the common sandbar shark. And we would encourage parties which are developing programs for management or for proper control and monitoring of the, this new listing of the dusky shark, to be aware that they could be misidentification with sandbar sharks in places where the two species are simpatic or where they co-occur. There are genetic studies available and there are genetic markers available, and we would be happy to assist parties which want to work on this kind of projects in working to help with identification of the sharks, to be sure that they're dealing with the proper shark species and not misidentifying with the sandbar. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Israel. Can I take it that you're nonetheless in support of the proposal? This seems to be the context that your remarks are made. Thank you. Argentina.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Queríamos felicitar al gobierno de Honduras por esta propuesta.
We would like to congratulate the government of Honduras on this proposal, and we consider that this species, the dusky shark, meets all the criteria for inclusion in Appendix Two of the CMS. Thank you.
Thank you, Argentina. Do I have any other requests for the floor on this item, on this proposal? Thank you. So I take it that the proposal by Honduras is acceptable and therefore endorsed by this committee, and we'll make that recommendation accordingly. Thank you very much. So with that, we've completed. And I'll finish the sentence. We've completed some of our work. We have a couple of options. And before I decide where to go next, I'd request the Chair of the Terrestrial Working Group to just, to ask whether the group, or as a result of the group's deliberations, we are ready to discuss the mammal proposals. Otherwise, we can move on to the next agenda item twenty-five point two. So can I call on or request Alfred to just give us a bit of advice, please?
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to talk back to you again and also to the plenary of the COW. I must indicate that the status of my report has not changed, as I indicated earlier. It remains the same. So, Mr. Chair, if you allow, I would kindly request for a little more time to attempt on the consensus, particularly on the four listing proposals that I had mentioned earlier. We also have three other agenda items which are quite minor. I mean, the details are quite minor, and therefore would request for a little more time, if you will, so that I will come back to you maybe first thing after lunch.
Thank you very much, Alfred. And indeed, you can have that extra time because it's a good investment of time, I'm sure. So let's talk after lunch. We'll, with a, but let's at least propose to start the mammal listing proposals directly after lunch. We have plenty other matters, but I do have a request from the EU. EU, you might be able to help us with our scheduling now. EU, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, we are in your hands, but our understanding is that only a few of the mammal proposals are still being discussed, so we might run through the others which are not controversial. That might be a way to proceed according to our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, EU. That's a very helpful suggestion. I think I'll just check back with the Chair of the Working Group. Clearly, I need to know which ones they are, because I don't want us to. So we'll just make sure that I'm clear which ones are. Just check with the Chair of the Working Group if he's happy for us to continue the listing proposals, those ones at least that appears to be a consensus within the Working Group on. Alfred, are you able to advise? Are you happy for us to continue with the listing proposals that we don't think are controversial?
Okay, Chair, if you will, that's fine. But I thought that colleagues are more interested in hearing that we have agreements in the proposals for inclusion of giraffe, chipansee, leopard, and the lion. And I would prefer that we have that together with the others as a whole, rather than to, but I'm in your hands. If you direct me what I should do, I'll kindly oblige.
Thank you. So, right, my ruling, as it were, is that we will defer all of the mammal proposals until after lunch, and then we can take them together. So now we have a number of other items. We have a few conference room papers, but what I've proposed is that we move to item twenty-five point two, which is the next item after the proposals, and that's revision of the template and guidelines for the drafting of proposals for the amendments of the appendices. So that's Document twenty-five point two, and I'll invite Marco to introduce that. Marco, Secretariat, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, I do refer to Document COP twelve, Doc twenty-five point two. The eleventh meeting of the Conference of the Parties adopted Resolution eleven thirty-three on guidelines for assessing listing proposals for, it's brought to Appendix One and Two of the Convention. And this resolution instructs the CMS Scientific Council and the Secretariat to update the template for submitting listing proposals, which was included in Resolution eleven point five. The Secretariat had prepared the first draft of a revised format and guidelines for proposals, and submitted it to the first meeting of the Sessional Committee of the Scientific Council. The Sessional Committee reviewed and amended the draft, and then submitted it to the forty-fifth meeting of the Standing Committee. The forty-fifth meeting further updated, amended the template and approved it. And that's the template that has been advised for use to parties for the proposal to be submitted to this, to this meeting. Now, the same template is submitted to the COP for the confirmation of its use for further cycles, for submission of proposal to next COPs. And if this will be the case, approval of incorporating this template and guidelines in the revised version of Resolution eleven thirty-three, which is also submitted to this, to this meeting. Before closing, I would like to point out that the second meeting of the Sessional Committee, in reviewing Document twenty-five point two, submitted a couple of proposals for amendment to the guidelines of the template, and these are included in Addendum Two to Document twenty-five point two. And therefore, we would need guidance from this meeting on whether these proposals for amendment made by the Sessional Committee have to be retained or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marco. Do I have any requests for the floor on this item? I have, I see Israel and I see EU. Israel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We would like to commend the Secretariat and the work that was done in preparing this new template. And as a party that used the template in listing proposals for this COP, we have one comment which we would like to make about paragraph nine of the template, which is on consultations. Paragraph nine states that the proponents should consult as far as possible nature conservation authorities of other range states before the proposal is submitted. And this guideline doesn't really give any requirement, and it certainly doesn't give any timeframe of when this should be. And there, we would like to perhaps make a small change to the wording and to encourage, instead of should consult, to make it shall consult and make it a requirement. There are cases where, and even put in a timeframe, at least thirty days before the deadline for submission, or sixty days before the deadline of submission, would probably be better. And there are cases where the consultation, a party is surprised to find out that one species that their range state of is suddenly proposed, and they find out only after it's been proposed. And there are cases where these kind of consultations would be beneficial for the listing proposal. So our suggestion was to, would be to change the language of the first line of paragraph nine to say the proponents shall consult, and instead of the words "as far as possible", within sixty days before the submission deadline, and the rest as it is in the text. Thank you.
Thank you, Israel. With respect to that suggestion, do I have any objection? It seems as if that amendment would be acceptable. Does anybody else want to, nobody else want to comment on that particular matter? No? Okay. Israel, do you still wish to speak? Or you, okay. So EU, please?
Thank you, Chair. So of course, the EU and its members say support the progress made to revise templates and guidelines in terms of user friendliness and clarity of the guidelines. We also note that the Scientific Council made some specific suggestions for wording changes and are happy with those incorporated. We do agree that templates and guidelines should be used for the submission of proposals to future meetings of the Conference of Parties, and agree that the template and color should be consolidated into Resolution eleven thirty-three in the annex. As regarding to the amendment just made by Israel, we're just at this point looking for your feedback, whether this is feasible, for example, for bird species and et cetera. So just want your feedback on this issue. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, EU. So I'll invite the Secretariat to respond to that question about, sorry, EU, you wanted feedback from the Secretariat or from, from the Chair on that matter?
Well, in fact, we just wondered if there was certainly a reason why there was "if possible" in the original text, because there might be species that have such a range covering the whole world, or where this is really always feasible to consult all of the range states. So we just wanted to have reassurance from the Secretariat that if you don't have any more, where possible, if this would still be feasible for all species, just that concern we have. Thank you.
Thank you, EU. And if I can make a comment from the Chair, I think that's a very important question. There will be situations, I imagine, where it's very, very difficult because of the nature of distribution global. But, Secretariat, do you wish to comment?
Thank you, Chair. Well, it might be difficult to be too prescriptive on the nature
on the nature of the consultations which are to be undertaken and depending also on the nature of the proposal. The consultation can be as simple probably as alerting a range state of the fact that a proposal is going to be submitted and asking for the feedback if needed. At the same time, in the history of the Convention, also before these new guidelines were developed, in fact, there was a considerable freedom left to parties on whether and how undertaking this consultation. These guidelines already strengthen significantly the language with respect to the previous guidelines. But that is up to the Conference to decide how strict this can be.
Well, we'll come to a conclusion on this. I don't want to get stuck on this small matter. But I'll hear from Argentina first. Argentina? Argentina says no. They don't wish to speak. They don't say no. But Brazil does wish to speak. Brazil?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to support the full process. It's very, very relevant to us to have some standard process to proposals to be presented to the COP. We have a minor amendment that should be proposed to appendix one. Should I amend it now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Just to at the C supporting statement, there is number five... Oh, does it say number five? Conservation statutes and threats. Would like to suggest to add the global and regional as this wording to... So it's going to be global and range states, conservation statutes and threats.
Brazil, that's in the heading, is that right? Number five? That's the heading of number five?
Yes, that's number five, appendix one, number five. C5, okay? It's written right now, conservation statutes and threats. I'd like to add to global and range states, conservation statutes and threats.
Any objection to the proposal by Brazil in the heading of section five of the annex? I don't see any, so I'm sure that would be acceptable. Australia wishes to speak. And then I'd see a flag. South Africa. Australia and then South Africa.
Thanks, Chair. Australia, I'm not clear where the Israel suggested amendments are sitting at the moment. But Australia would like to express our strong support for such an amendment. I think it's very important when amendments to the appendices to the Convention are being proposed that range states are made aware of that early before the closure of the submission. Thank you.
Thank you, Australia. The Israel suggestion is sitting in limbo slightly at the moment. We're not yet resolved because of the discussion. I will just indicate before I go to the next party on the list that these are guidelines. So that's has a bearing on how they're interpreted, how shall or should might be interpreted. Next party ahead was... Yeah, New Zealand next. Thank you, New Zealand.
Thank you, Chair. We'd also like to express our support for the suggestion made by Australia and Israel. Thank you.
Thank you, New Zealand. And apologies, South Africa. You were on my list, and how could you slip out of my mind? South Africa.
Thank you, Chair. You are forgiven. South Africa would like to support the intervention made by Israel. We also think it's of utmost importance that countries are informed and consulted on proposals that also facilitates the discussions during the COP and allow, as with adequate time, to consult within our countries all the affected departments that will be affected by proposed listings. So we support the proposal made by Israel. Thank you.
Thank you, Israel. We've got, I think, a fair idea of support. But I did have a call from Uganda and the European Union. And then I would like to close this particular small item, important though it is. So Uganda and then the EU.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uganda wishes to align herself to the proposal made by Israel and to retaliate that it is extremely important to have the range states consulted before proposals are made because appendices constitute a significant part of the work of CMS. And I think we've started observing a trend of species that do not qualify to be listed under CMS brought before the COP, which to us results in a time wasting of the COP. And therefore, we should treat the issue of consulting range states before proposals are made as fundamental. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Uganda. And the EU, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just not to get us wrong, we certainly also very much see the need to consult with range states. This is very important. However, I think not all the species are alike. And therefore, it might be a way out to keep where possible, but still use the Israel proposal and just add where possible there because there might be situation where it's just impossible to do that, to consult with all range states. So that's why maybe that might be a way out. Thank you.
Thank you, EU. And given the guidelines and given your suggestion and the nodding of the head that I see from Israel, I think that's the way through this. So the wording would be shall instead of should, but remain where possible. And with that, I think we can... Unless there are any other comments on other components of this document, I think we can thank the secretariat and endorse the proposal. Thank you. So we're not... Don't have too long to go for lunch. So what I would like to do is to move on to item 16.1, as advised earlier. It's document 16.1, enhancing synergies and common services among CMS family instruments. And so I invite the executive secretary to talk to us on this, please. Bradney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As requested by Resolution 11.3, this document contains the report of the implementation of the sharing of common services and synergies among the instruments in the CMS family. Implementation of the activities outlined in the report contributes towards the future structures and strategies of CMS in the CMS family Resolution 10.9. The resolution has a number of requests. First request was to submit an independent analysis on common services. The second request invites the relevant governing bodies of CMS instruments to consider the report. Next was invites the meeting of the parties of AWI at a six session, MOB6, to consider the independent analysis and report and take a decision on the way forward. The next request was request the Standing Committee of CMS to consider the outcome of the six session of the meeting of parties to AWI and to take the appropriate decision in accordance with the outcome. The next request for this was for the CMS Standing Committee to consider the outcomes in meetings of the decision-making bodies of the other CMS family instruments and to take appropriate decisions. The next item was instructs the Executive Secretary of CMS to work in close cooperation with the Executive Secretaries and coordinators of the CMS family instruments in implementing the outcomes of the decisions of the Standing Committee. It further requests the Executive Secretary to report on the outcomes of these decisions to UNEP in view of the ongoing processes under UNEP. And then lastly, requests the Executive Secretary in close consultation with the Executive Secretary of AWI to report the outcomes of the pilot phase and the implementation of this resolution. So contained in this document is the full report on the outcomes from all of these items. And the recommended actions for this report is for the Conference of Parties to take note of the report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bradney. And we're invited to take note, but of course, we can take comments. So do I have any comments or queries on this report? Yes, I have requests from AWI. AWI, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And in addition to what Bradney has reported, I would like to say that this common communication team has been a great success. And I'm really happy, as I have Executive Secretary, to have participated to this common unit and to the common management of the unit. And I'm sure that all participants have noticed the tremendous work made under the supervision of Bradney for making this COP highly visible. So I'm really glad to support these synergies within the CMS family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, AWI. That's very good. Any other requests for the floor to comment on this? No. So the report is noted, but noted with great appreciation, I think we can add. Okay. With that, we've... We're at 12:30. I'm tempted to continue just a little bit because we have a big agenda. But I think you may wish to spend some time really familiarizing yourselves with the CRP papers that have been posted. And Melanie's going to let us know which ones are available so that when we come back, either directly before or after the mammal proposals, we can get in and quickly get through those that are available. So Melanie, can I ask you to let us know the status of the CRPs and their availability and in translated form, please?
Yes, thank you. So CRPs are being uploaded in all languages as we speak. But the status as of now is that we have CRP1 on concerted actions, CRP2 on aquatic wild meat, CRP3 on the live capture of cetaceans, CRP4 on livelihoods, CRP5, which I believe is whales and the Atlantic Action Plan, and CRP7, which I believe is the Multispecies Action Plan on vultures, are all available in three languages. And then moving on to the repeal of decisions, we have CRP101, a consolidation regarding national reports, CRP2, a consolidation regarding wildlife disease... Sorry, CRP101 is national reports. CRP102 is wildlife disease. CRP103 is the repeal of Resolution 3.1, the listing of species on the appendices. And CRP104 is the repeal of Resolution 7.2, the impact assessments in migratory species. And over the lunch break, I'm sure more will be uploaded because there's already many more in English, and the French and Spanish will be uploaded soon, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. So I think with that, I would propose that we break now for our lunch, our working groups and our side events. But there may... There are some more announcements before we do break finally. So don't leave just yet. Secretariat has some announcements.
So the Contact Group on Sustainable Tourism document, which involves the Philippines, Norway, the EU, and Ecuador, will take place now in room D304 on the third floor. And I just wonder if either Marco or Colin Goldbraith are able to update us on the working group looking at the strategic plan, climate change, and other documents. They were meeting this morning in parallel, but I don't have any updated plans from them. If they're not in the room, then... Oh, I can see it, sorry.
Yes, we met. Both working groups met. As regards the climate change, we foresee to have another meeting sometime this afternoon. We will communicate at the beginning of the session this afternoon when the meeting will take place. It will take place again in room 309, as this morning. And I'm not... I don't have the latest development of the working group on the strategic plan because this was just meeting in parallel to this session, and I had to join the session here. Progress was good, but I cannot say whether the work has been completed or not.
Thank you, Marco. Any more announcements? No. Okay. So with that, if I was really cheeky, I would say, please be back here at 2:45, and then we can start at 3. See you then. Thanks. Have a good time. Bye.